Under email city department slash city council. Would you all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. Going to do roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Councilor Stackpole.
Present.
Councilor Hanselman.
Present.
Councilor Martel.
Present.
Councilor Tranchmontaine.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present, our city manager Steve Buck and executive assistant Larissa Ricketts. And we are doing a rearranging of our calendar, our, excuse me, our agenda, because I know many of you have to get back out on the streets. So we're going to, from under new business, we're going to take 23, 127, 01, in order to confirm the city manager's appointment of Scott Soucy, Scott D. Soucy, to the position of chief of the Sanford Fire Department pursuant to sections 402.3 of the Sanford City Charter. And I know that Steve is going to take this over. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So for the public viewing viewing at home, the history is that Chief Steven Benati retired after 11 years, 11 years of dedicated service within the department as chief, within the department. He left our department in an exceptional operational status, having implemented labor management platform, interspace bargaining, multi-year planning, as well as implementing the fire feasibility study towards the changes and future construction from three stations down to two. Knowing that that retirement was coming, the city did a national posting for the fire chief position, originally posted that on October 11th and extended it on November 11th of 2022. Pursuant to that advertising, advertising, we received 10 applications, very strong and well-qualified applicants. And then Mayor Mastrakio appointed a fire selection committee, not differently than what was done for the hiring of the police chief. Committee was comprised of deputy mayor Mara Hurley, then councillor Brink, now mayor Brink, Assistant Chief Brick Smith, Captain Eric Beecher, Police Chief Craig Anderson, our HR Director Stacy Howes, Dr. Andy Powell, who's our medical director for the EMS services, and Dr. Bill Frank, who is also our health officer within the community, and myself. Pursuant to that selection committee being set up, we polled them as far as what was important for the next chief here in our community for firing EMS services, having different perspectives and such under that. And we utilized that survey work with that selection committee to identify both our oral board, oral board process for the first and the secondary processes. Moving forward with the first oral board process, we, we had selected the five, top five candidates for the office and focused on technical capacity of those candidates in the areas of administration of fire and EMS, medical services, fire ground operations, emergency center operations, EMS training, billing and quality control, labor management, budget administration, employee training, development and well-being, fire metric design of stations, public relations, and others. The interview team was comprised of Mayor Brink, Deputy Mayor Hurley, Chief John Duross, Chief CJ Eclair, Chief Anderson, our HR Director, and myself. In the first round, the committee unanimously selected the top three technically qualified by credentials candidates to progress to the second oral board process. In that second oral board process, the committee shifted, was comprised of Mayor Brink, Deputy Mayor Hurley, Assistant Chief Smith, and Captain Beecher. So they replaced the outside chiefs that we had as part of the process. They came in to give the department's perspective as far as fit for the department moving forward. Chief Anderson, again, HR Director Howes, and myself. Secondary process, interviewed the top three candidates, again, on qualifications, but also as a best fit for the department in the areas of why this career move at this time, certifications, mutual and automatic mutual aid agreements in the administration thereof, relations with regional medical services, fire station design and construction, budget development and administration, ambulance charge masters and quality control, staff training, promotion, and well-being, again, labor management, and leadership skills and style. From this process, unanimous decision was made to extend the offer of this position to Scott D. Soucy. As far as qualifications for Chief Soucy, he is a 32 years as a medic, trained as a combat medic, medical specialist under the Maine Army National Guard and the U.S. Army Reserve, surgical first assistant for 20 years. He's been in the fire and EMS services for 20 years as a firefighter, paramedic, ambulance director, and health officer, in the last 11 years as fire chief of the Caribou Fire and EMS Department in Maine. He has worked as the fire chief and ambulance director. He is firefighter, two, paramedic, fire instructor, two, high-angle technical rescue train, city health and safety officer. Multiple certifications, main fire chief officer, two, pro-board fire officer, three and four, pro-board fire officer, one and two, pro-board fire instructor, one and two, paramedic, advanced cardiovascular life support, pre-hospital trauma life support instructor, paramedic, advanced life support and CPR, hazmat op, CDLB hazmat, and confined space instructor. As far as his career so far, he's, the Maine Police Chiefs Association has awarded him the life-saving award, the National Fire Based EMS Excellence Award, the American Legion has given him firefighter of the year, the Red Cross has given him the Community Impact Award, and the Maine Chiefs Association has presented him as fire chief of the year in 2017. As far as boards, he has served on the Northern Maine Community College Advisory Committee for EMS programming, a Maine Fire Chiefs Association Forestry Committee Chair, and formerly the Maine Emergency Medical Services Board of Directors. He is a host of FEMA and IS and ICS certifications as well, as well as the National Fire Academy Instructor One and Two. So pursuant to the, the fire selection committee input and the national search of qualified candidates, the two-tiered oral board process and a unanimous selection resulting, and further, I further recognize from the process, the ability of Chief Soucy to lead the Sanford Department through the exercise of his acquired certifications of work experience. Chief Soucy embodies the combination of fire and EMS chief with an exceptionally strong background in emergency medical services, a critical level of services within our combined department. I further have direct experience with Chief Soucy, having appointed him as fire chief in the city of Caribou 11 years ago, and as having watched his career develop for that same period of time. The chief comes from a city in a department of smaller proportions, but yet served population of nearly that of Sanford, a service territory encompassing over 400 square miles and medical run volumes currently exceeding that of our own department. This is to provide a greater insight into the complexities, volumes, and challenging environment in which he has successfully administered a combined fire and EMS department. I'm further able to attest to his work ethics and dedication of service as being exemplary. So I request at this time, as the search process has affirmed, and for all of the qualifications and reasons I stated, I hereby appoint Scott D. Soucy as Sanford's next fire chief in formally request pursuant to charter 402.3 that the city council affirm this appointment to be effective April 27th of 2023.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Scott Soucy as the Sanford Fire Chief effective April 27th, 2023.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And typically, we have, yeah, we don't have any, normally, I embarrass family at this time, Scott, so you don't have your, your family isn't here?
She's online.
She's online? Okay, so I can't call her up to the podium. All right. I'll have my chance at some point.
Congratulations.
So as the interim chief, I just want to say welcome to Chief Soucy. We look forward to working with you, and tonight, I would like to present you with the badge as chief.
It's a big transition for me. I'm not big on me. It's about the team that does it, and the people that I've met so far have been wonderful and the interactions I've had. So it's, it's never one person, it's everybody involved, and I just hope to be able to uphold that with what they've already produced in this, in this community, and for the city and the citizens.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
You could tell he didn't like this. It's all over, it's all over your face.
And there's a five-hour drive involved. That was, that was part of it. Thank you, thank you very much, and really honored. Thank you.
Well, we're honored to have you here.
If you made it in five, the police chief needs to see you.
What happens on the road stays on the road.
And I see Chief Benati out there. Thank you for showing up for this. It's wonderful to see you. And we can move on? And the minutes, 23, 123 dash 01, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on March 7th, 2023. Do I have a motion? Tranchmontaine, oh, and then I'll, Martel, you can be second. All those in favor? Thank you very much. 23, 124, 01, in order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council meeting held on March 7th, 2023, do I have a motion? Can I see a hand before the, thank you.
You start being like.
Council Tranchmontaine?
I have a motion.
Okay, and a second? Council Martel, thank you very much.
Council Martel wasn't.
Oh, Council Martel, he was online, wasn't he? Oh.
Not for the executive.
Not for the executive. You can't second that one. I need a second second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Council Stackpole, second that. All those in favor? Thank you. And, yeah, okay, we got it. All right. I already did, the mayor's report is part of the last meeting, so for this one, do we have any subcommittee reports other than what's already going to be on the agenda? Councilor Stackpole?
Zoning.
Zoning, go ahead.
So zoning, we did meet last Tuesday, and we looked at a couple of different things related to zoning, and mainly, this was reviewing the code for short-term rentals. Think of things like Airbnbs and, and things like that. This is really preemptive in looking at this. It was discussed, there's, there's currently no serious problem with long-term rental properties. However, we want to be preemptive, and of course, the main thing that we're looking to avoid is a bad situation where we have a short-term rental that it's not appropriate in a neighborhood or in the location that, that it may be in. So we're looking at how to zone these short-term rentals, STRs as they're called, in a way that supports the business of short-term rentals, because we certainly want to support that. We do feel that that brings economic development to our community, but we don't want in any way to kind of destroy the quality of life in our, in our neighborhoods in our community. So that's forthcoming. We are reviewing the, the code. We, we haven't really entered into a final discussion on anything, and of course, that's going to come to the council for consideration. We also looked at the standards for tiny homes, and looked at the state statutes for tiny homes, and discuss our own standards that we have, and felt that they were sufficient at this time for dealing with, with tiny homes. So that was reviewed, and the consensus was that we didn't need to dig any deeper into that. We also reviewed some zone changes, 3 Hanson's Ridge Road and 26 Robert Streets, Street, and that was just zoning change so that the, some of those lots could be consolidated. In fact, I think both of them were on some consolidating the zoning on those lots. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council Hanselman?
Madam Mayor, though you were kind enough to run the meeting for me, you, you said I could still report on public safety.
I, I just got out of hand.
I, I enjoyed the break, but just in brief, because I actually then forgot to prepare meeting minutes, but in brief, there was a good discussion on on-street parking issues in downtown Springville, relative in particular to a, a business owner that has some concerns about their hours of, or their need to access their building during certain hours during the winter. So there was extensive discussion on that and a decision to let the chief issue a permit to address that particular issue, but there's conversation around relooking at some point our winter parking bans. We'll discuss the school street parking lot tonight. And then in terms of public, excuse me, police department updates, I just wanted to share that it was great to see our body cameras in play. We actually got a little video example of them at our public safety meeting, and that was great to see how they're working well for the department. And then, you know, we're talking a little bit about recruitment for the police department, which I know is a multi-departmental effort, with Jordan and our police department and HR department working hard to look at recruitment for the police department. And then just some other small updates on the mental health unit and the, sorry, I don't remember Officer Allen's presence. See, I really checked out once you took over that meeting, Mayor. But those are the highlights, and the big one, which took a lot of the meeting time, was the school street parking lot, which we'll talk about tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to point out about the recording of the person who was pulled over for speeding. I thought it was quite humorous that he was in a 25 mile an hour zone, going 39 miles an hour, but he said he wasn't, there wasn't a problem because he wasn't going 40. So it was good that the camera was there to let him know that 39 is still speeding. So it was, yeah. So it's a good thing you guys have those cameras now. Does help out. Thank you. Anyone else reporting out?
I'm just curious if they, like, use body cams when they're pulling me over for my headlight being out.
I hope so. Could we see that one if that is?
I don't know. The young man was, seemed to be in training, so.
They did blur out, they have the ability to blur out the person, so you aren't embarrassing a person with any of that stuff, so. Yes, it was, it was a lot of fun to watch. Is that it for subcommittees? All right. And Steve, did you have a report this time? Okay.
Yes, I apologize, I can't, I can't give you a formal, formally written and typed report this evening. Wanted an mediation today, was proposed to be a two-hour mediation, it lasted for six hours, so it's been one of those days today. I wanted to start with a wrap-up. So last, gosh, was it last Friday Senator King was here?
Yes.
Gosh, that seems like a month ago. So last Friday Senator King was here.
I thought it was the Friday before.
I think it was.
I think it was the Friday before, because I went to the library.
Yes, last Friday, last Friday was.
And I saw, and I said, how'd it go? Yeah, no, it was the Friday before.
Yeah, so, so Senator King was coming here to York County with staff. They started their tour of the day at the Goodall Library that had a CDS, Congressional Discretionary Spending Grant that's going to allow them to put a, an expansion and renovations to the library that will include a, a drive-up window for services, so you can pick up your books as a, as a drive-through service, return your books accordingly and such. He then, then the senator and the staff came to, here to City Hall, and we met them, with them on Friday morning. We had them for a little over two hours of, of time. The senator wanted to hear about the RACE grant, the city's success in, in obtaining that, how that took place. Huge amount of that credit goes to Public Works Department and Matt Hill and the creation of the Planning Partnership Initiative, which ultimately led to the working relationship with the Maine Department of Transportation to create the Village Partnership Initiative, which led to the funding of writing the grant for formerly Tiger and now RACE, for American Infrastructure Grants Funding. The deputy commissioner of Maine Department of Transportation, Transportation came down for the meeting with the senator because she wanted to also support the, the partnership level that's between the department and the city and the work that's being done to no longer competing for former Tiger grants, but now working hand-in-hand to obtain $25 million worth of federal funding with another $10 million worth of match funding going into that for the pending RACE grant. We talked to the senator about that. We then talked to the senator about all of that planning work that had been done that allowed us to apply for the SS4A, the Safe Streets For All, for which we've been awarded $200,000, which we'll put a $20,000 match to, to do an engineered analysis of all of our safety impediments for both pedestrian and street, street traffic improvements. From there, there's a billion dollars a year of American infrastructure funds out there that we can, we can pull from that engineered portfolio, anything as small as $200,000 and anything up to $15 million worth of anticipated project cost, and put that in for funding. So that is a huge win-win for the city, all building upon that planning work. And then from there, the senator wanted to hear more about Sanford Net Fiber. We gave him the statistics of the number of businesses that are attached, how that business structure works, how it's a public-private partnership with GWI being the lead ISP and a for-profit entity that's administering that, and the, the senator views that as a, as a success. We did get to geek out a lot.
No, it was a lot, lot. Steve just went wild on, on that and kept going, but I have to say Senator King was really interested in it. It was like he loved it.
That's because he's just as much of a geek.
Well, we started, started talking about, those of you that were around for the first year implementation of the laptop program, correct?
Yes.
Which was a really long, long time ago, so.
Wasn't Jordan, like, in junior high at the time?
I was going to say, yes.
I believe, the mayor has told me that came up.
As adults, yes. Yeah, there were stories of success, stories of fear. There was an interesting conversation around the laptops.
It was, and, and Jordan looked really guilty of something there partway through. She would have been in junior high at the time we had those laptops. And for those people at home who are wondering what we're talking about, I was the principal of the junior high at the time, and we had the laptops, and there was a program that I could actually go onto anybody's computer and see where they were, and I would sneak on, and I would tell them, I'm watching you, you need to get off this site. So it was, and what was really interesting, I think I only did it three times in the whole year, and, but it got around that apparently I must have done it to everybody's laptop, because rumor just got bigger and bigger and bigger. So I, I just didn't have to do anything for the rest of the year with a laptop, so it was perfect.
So the Senator King staff was very instrumental in aiding us as far as Sanford Net Fiber, as far as legislation was concerned, as far as funding was concerned, and I'm looking to them in the future to continue to assist us through, under the American Infrastructure Act, to get additional funding to make the other 300 businesses that we have in a near fiber drop on Sanford Net Fiber, to make those, those last connections. Another interesting development, as, as was discussed at the last council meeting, the Sanford Springvale News is no longer in publication. That is a severe loss to our community. Zendell, if you're listening tonight, you served, you served our community well. I want to thank you for that, that service. It was an incredible product. To that end, our communications coordinator, Jordan Wilson, has been working with the local paper called The Reporter. It's published out of Waterboro, covers the communities to our north and west. It does cover Sanford Springvale, but not to the level that we'd like to see, so there's a working partnership coming forward on that, to have a Sanford Springvale specific section and have widespread distribution in our community. So I'd invite people that, in the absence of the Sanford Springvale News, if you go to our city website, sign up for the Municipal Memo. It is a small newspaper unto itself. I'd encourage everybody to sign up for that. You can look at the Municipal Monthly in there for monthly stats as well. Also coming out of communications, there's the promotional hiring video that was shot here a couple of months ago that's coming back to light now, so we have a generic portion of that, where both the mayor and I contributed work product to that, as far as the speaking engagement, and then Jordan is working to work on the department-specific, the first of which will be the police department, as a means of addressing the 11 openings that we have coming to differentiate our department, not just on pay, benefits, and such, but really on the work environment and the positive change and attitude that's taking place within that department. As mentioned earlier under the budget presentation, we've had a planner vacancy for quite a period of time that we have made it, extended an offer, the offer's been accepted, and the individual starts on Monday. That is huge for our city and that we've been significantly understaffed in that department for several years, four, four years running, so this, bringing, bringing a new planner on board will be significant to the organization. I think the next to the last item that I have is the Stent and Trust Building, the former Stent and Trust Building, half of which burnt here 2015? Was it 15 or 17? I don't remember which. 16? Okay, well, it was one of those years. So wind development, that's public information, they've submitted their, their site plan and such, so wind development has been working on the redevelopment of that. They've, they've had ongoing dialogue with the main, main housing authority. There's funding elements there, there's not enough resources statewide, so it's difficult to compete for the four and the five percent, four and the nine percent money that's important to those type of projects. They, they have completed the capital stack. As part of that, we submitted three letters of support for congressional discretionary spending, CDS grants, one to Senator King, one to Senator Collins, and one to Representative Pingree. Those three letters went out last week as, in meeting all of those deadlines, so we're seeking congressional funding to come into that project to bolster it going forward. And the last element that I have is the, it is legislative, legislative time, the bills are coming out at a rapid pace at this point in time. City continues to work on its advocacy on major levels. Mayor Brink is working with the mayor's coalition on those elements that are identified that are most impactful to the largest cities out there, service and the communities, one of which is English as a second language, which Matt knows well, the impacting, impactful elements that are, that are there, as well as the necessary changes in, in the EPS funding formula to address assessments. And, and also, both Ian Housefield and myself are the city's appointed representatives on the Legislative Policy Committee with MMAs. We'll have a full day on that on Thursday to address several hundred bills in a single day as far as the municipal's perspective and the impacts ongoing. So I just wanted the public to know that we're not working just at the local level, but working at the state level in, in coordination to try and have positive impacts as it impacts our taxable base. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Steve. And for people who don't know, Steve really knows a lot about the state function and all those bills, so I feel very confident working beside him on that. He's extremely impressive. So thank you again, Steve.
Remember, when we get to the parking lot?
We're moving on to communication and participation. Are we all set? 23, 68 dash 01, a presentation by the Garbage to Garden on the upcoming curbside posting program for the city of Sanford. And who is presenting this? Is Steve?
Anika Schmidt.
Anika Schmidt?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, did I get your name right?
Yep, Annika Schmidt.
Oh, Annika, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
And, let's see. So I can pull up the screen here. So I can pull up the screen here.
Does she have screen sharing?
It looks, yeah, it looks like it'll work, okay. And of course, computers being sort of...
Are we able to enlarge this so we can see it? There we go, all right, we're set and ready, we can see everything.
Okay, perfect. Is that large enough?
Yes, we can see it.
There you go. Okay, perfect. So first off, thank you to the City Council and the Department of Public Works for inviting me to speak on behalf of Garbage to Garden about the composting programs that will be beginning in Sanford and Springvale next month. Garbage to Garden was founded in Portland in 2012. Tyler Frank, the founder, had grown up in North Yarmouth composting at home and was living in an apartment in Portland, wondering why it wasn't as simple as just placing a bin out at the curb. He didn't have room to compost himself, and so after a discussion with roommates, they decided to set up a table at the Portland Art Walk, got their first 17 sign-ups, bought some buckets at Home Depot, and with his used pickup truck began collection routes in Portland. It has grown over the last 10-plus years organically from there. We now service 13 communities within Maine for curbside service, additional communities for our drop-off sites and commercial accounts, and we also have a satellite operation in Massachusetts where we service four communities as well as a municipal contract with the city of Boston. Additionally, beyond the idea of creating a sort of municipal-scale service that's easy and accessible for all, there's also sort of this foundational idea of closing the loop. Our food scraps and compostable waste contain nutrients that, instead of going to waste, can be recycled to create a finished compost product that's nutrient-rich, nurtures our soil, has benefits for the environment, and prevents those from ending up in a landfill or incineration. And so the partnership with the city of Sanford, we've sort of seen increasing interest at the municipal level, and because of all the work put in by the Department of Public Works to secure the main DEP Waste Grant, the city will be providing a free curbside bucket to each participant, up to 1,000, as well as a free one-month trial. Normally, that would be an $8 bucket fee to begin service and $19 per month, but I will go into that a little bit further here. So the way our service works is we provide the curbside bucket, five-gallon bucket with the secure locking lid. Each week on your service day, we come collect your food scraps, and we'll actually swap out that bucket for a clean one, so there's really no mess to the participant involved. And we'll also give back the finished compost that those participants helped create, so that's included in the $19 per month. Essentially, as long as it's seasonally available, April through December, the participants are able to get roughly a two to 2.5-gallon bag of compost back as part of that service. The composting, separating our food scraps, of course reduces the weight and volume of our trash for folks using those city trash bags. This obviously helps reduce what they're paying for in city trash bags, it reduces what's ending up in the landfill or incineration, it also reduces pest problems, you know, by keeping these food scraps secure. We have an additional service, cooking oil and grease, those items can be included. I'll go a little more into sort of the wide range of accepted items, but more than a home composting, we can accept meat, bones, dairy, and cooking fat, grease, those items are accepted in the bucket, but we'll also accept those if they're sort of strained in liquid form in a separate plastic container. You can see on the bottom there on the left, a couple reused containers containing kitchen oil. Those get brought to main biofuels and recycled into biodiesel, and they're also used to create the degreaser used, excuse me, to clean the buckets. So there will also be a free drop-off site installed at the transfer station. That, of course, would be limited to the transfer station hours, but anybody is welcome to collect their food scraps, compostable items, and bring those and drop them off there. As that is a free service, that doesn't include the finished compost, but we estimate, based on our average participants, that for every three to four people who participate, the city saves roughly one ton of trash per year. So some of our goals to keep the program sort of economically viable for our company, given, you know, sort of the distance that we're traveling, certainly if we decide to expand service areas around Sanford and Springvale, that sort of reduces the burden on sort of how successful we need this program to be. But in analyzing the curbside program, we're hoping to reach 5% of the population, or roughly 450 households of those receiving municipal trash services, to sign up. I believe at this point we have 75 participants signed up for the free trial, and then by the end of the calendar year, hoping to increase that to 10% participation. The, actually, I'm sorry, I skipped over one item in the previous one, and this is an important one. Our service is also free when you volunteer or when you refer another household. So we could really use help for spreading the word, anybody that's already signed up, they receive a unique referral code with their account, and when they share that with another household, they will actually both receive a free month of service added on beyond the free trial. We do also have a pretty extensive volunteer program. In our service area in Cumberland County, we have a monthly newsletter that goes out to anybody that opts in to receive it, it's not to sort of all participants, and I believe we have roughly 3,000 folks signed up for that. And basically, it just highlights opportunities to volunteer, both with Garbage to Garden, we host Zero Waste Event Services that we recruit volunteers for, but we also try to partner with a lot of local organizations. So it's our intention to reach out to Sanford and Springvale nonprofits, the local land trust, food pantries, organizations sort of focused on food access and food rescue, and try to help recruit volunteers for them. And essentially, the way that program works is, once a participant contributes a minimum of two-plus hours per month, we'll offer them a credit for their next month of service. We do have some pretty dedicated volunteers that volunteer throughout the year and do receive free service. So that's always been a really important aspect of our service, to keep that accessible and to provide methods for people to continue beyond financial barriers. So the drop-off site, again, that is free for participants, but it does require a separate commercial vehicle, so that would not be serviced on our weekly residential collection route. So there's the additional need to really build out commercial composting services. We're hoping to connect with the local schools, any local businesses interested in this service to really help build out that route and, you know, keep it fuel-efficient as well as just, you know, mindful of those routes that we're driving. So ideally, by May 1st, we're hoping to build out 10 commercial accounts to add on to that drop-off site. And so as to the accepted items that I mentioned, typically in a home composting system, you would want to avoid anything like meat, bones, dairy, those items can cause odor issues, they can also attract pests, but primarily, they can lead to pathogens that live on in the soil. So when you look at commercial or community-scale composting, because those piles are reaching such high temperatures ranging roughly 135 to 160 degrees, and those temperatures are maintained for a prolonged period, I believe it's a minimum of 21 days, those high temperatures mitigate any risk of those pathogens carrying on from those items. So especially in communities with the city trash bags, it's just an additional item that you can divert from your trash, as well as food soil paper, basically anything, any food scrap, we can accept that. And so the intention with this service really is just making it as easy as possible. We've got a great customer service team that is available Monday through Friday during our business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and they're available for phone calls about service issues. We get lots of emails from people asking about accepted items or whatnot, and we're happy to sort of address any of those and be as responsive as we can for that service. And I believe that is all for me. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent presentation, thank you very much. And I do believe Bob Stackpole has been very excited about this program, he's already reported out to us.
Absolutely.
Which is fantastic, so do any of the councils have any questions about this program? Jonathan?
Yeah, I was just looking through the documentation here, and it looks like at least the first month is partially subsidized by the city. I didn't see any financials around that, so I'm hoping that maybe Steve or you can present something around that.
Steve's gonna handle that.
It's coming from a grant from the DEP.
Okay, so that'd be coming from the DEP program?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no extra taxpayer costs for us?
It's not, it's a voluntary program. We have a grant from DEP to assist in implementing that and bringing the program to a successful level.
Okay, great, thank you.
Quick question.
Can I just jump in on that for a second? Sorry, this is Matt Hill.
Yes.
There are some city-approved funds that are part of the grant match. They were approved by the City Council.
Yeah, we already did that part, I think, yes. So quick question, so this is obviously based on the curbside route, so people who don't get curbside pickup, I'm assuming would be able to participate as well, or?
Yes, this is a completely voluntary program.
Right, so you're not really sticking to that 100%, like, because I'm on a private street, I, you know, I would want to participate, but I'm not, I don't do curbside, I take it to the dump on Saturdays. Okay.
Any other questions? Council Stackpole?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but a comment. First of all, I'm already signed up. If you haven't signed up, you can go online and sign up.
Sure.
And, well, you know, I have been, I know, I have been a big proponent of this, so I wanted to make sure that I was in that first round of signups. It is completely optional, there's no cost to anybody that doesn't want to pay to have this done. I'll confess, and I think, Annika, you might have been the one who helped me with this, I was on my phone, in fairness to me, and I didn't set up my account correct, and you have two options. One is, because it's a direct payment, so you sign up with a credit card or something like that, and they have two options, you can pay annually or you can pay monthly. So I clicked the boxes and went on and found out the next day that I had over $200 taken out of my checking account for Garbage to Gardens, which is not what I wanted. I wanted to pay the $19 a month. So I called up, and customer service was very responsive, and they said they were gonna look in to see if there was a way they could make that more clear on their website, and I'm sure that was done. And the next day, I had my money refunded to my account, they didn't take anything out because the first month is free, so, and then after that, it'll be $19 a month. So my experience with the company was very positive and forthcoming and quick. I think it's gonna be a great service, and I'll just say quickly, I first heard about this type of program when I was working in Old Orchard Beach, last couple of years when I was working, and they used to do, you know, a lot of composting from their kitchen scraps, and then they had a student garden that they used to have out in front of their middle school, La Ranger School, I think it was, over there, and they used to use the composting in the community garden, and the students would come out, these are elementary school-age students, would come out and work in the garden. That was part of their curriculum, but also worked in association with getting composting and things like that from Garbage to Gardens. I don't know if that program is still going on now in Old Orchard Beach, I'm going back six or eight years now, but that's where I first heard about it, and I think it's a great program, and I think we're really lucky to be involved in this grant. Thank you, Garbage to Gardens, thank you, Matt, for completing the application and getting in on this, and I hope it's something that everybody who cares to gets involved in. It can be a huge savings to the community and just to your household in the amount of those orange trash bags that everybody hates so much. Well, if you compost more, you'll use fewer orange trash bags, which will save you a few bucks too in the long run, so. The other thing I want to say is, most compost programs, they don't take paper towels, napkins, paper plates, I'm assuming, those types of things. They don't take bones, meat-type stuff. Usually those, if you are backyard composting, you can't put those in your compost, so this is an extra really service. I mean, they take everything. So again, I encourage everybody, go sign up on their website, make sure you click the right box for how you want to pay, and enjoy. This is gonna line up with, I don't think this has been said, the attempt is gonna be to line up the green buckets with your rubbish pickup for the week. So mine happens to be on early Tuesday morning, so the green buckets will be synchronized with that Tuesday morning pickup. So that's how everything's gonna work, you just put it out with your orange trash bag and your other recyclables, and it should just be that quick, simple and easy, and yeah, and you get some compost for free for your flower gardens.
Council Stackpole, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, just to clarify on the point about trash day alignment, we will be beginning service for everyone on Tuesdays, but certainly, once we get enough subscribers, our intention is always to divide that up so it is trash day-aligned, really just to take that burden off the user to try and remember, you know, one more thing. And then additionally, you mentioned the donations. We do also have a compost give-back to our commercial accounts. I don't know if it's been sort of discussed already for this, but we do have, so Harpswell, for example, based on how much waste they create, we give them, I believe, a yard and a half or so of compost, and they actually use that as a way to help fund the program. They sell it at a reduced rate to participants, they can come pay $5 for a bucket, or they could be used in the, you know, community gardens or parks. So that is also available for the commercial portion of the program.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for the presentation and a fantastic program.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on to public participation. Did we have anybody, the paper? Is there a sign-up back there?
There is.
Get the superintendent to check.
Nothing, thank you very much. Anyone online? I can't see the online people. Okay, moving right along then. Public hearings, the City Council will take public comments on the following, and this is twenty-three, one-twenty-eight, zero-one, joint public hearing with the City Council and the School Committee.
On the budget.
I'm assuming this is on the budget. Oh, I'm gonna open the public... Oh, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Any comments? Anything online? To our very special guest, Chief Benardi.
I told myself I'd never do this again. I got tired of being here after eleven years. Quick personal comment, you picked a great choice for fire chief. I've known Scott for about eleven years, ten or eleven years, through the work through the Main Chiefs Association. And he's a great guy and a good person, and I think he'll fit well in the community.
Thank you very much.
That being said, I'm just here to express my concerns as a taxpayer and as a person who did work for the city for eleven years with what I'm hearing for the budget this year. And that is not that the amount, other than I'm hearing the deja vu of positions being talked about being cut and positions not being funded that have been there for a long time, have been asked for for a long time. I know every year since I've been here, there was never a good year. There was not a huge cash flow or a Brink's truck that dumped on City Hall. So it's never been good. So it's always been about proper management of getting the services and whatever done. I do want to portray to the people out there that it's extremely important for everybody to understand that the three big departments within the state are manpower-intensive. They do a lion's share of the work that's seen out there between the police, fire and public works. And I think it's very important that you fund them appropriately. I think it's, to talk about getting rid of the fire marshal's position again is a huge, huge mistake. We went down this road once before. That position has shown its worth. If you get rid of that position, you will not have the economic engine that you think you might have because of the ability to be able to do the plan reviews in a short amount of time. It's not just that part of his job that's important. There's many other pieces of it, including just regular emergency response, fire investigations, where we do not have to rely on the overworked state fire marshal's position for every fire that has to be investigated. And I can go on and on, and I won't do that. But I urge you, and I plead with you, to look seriously about this aspect because we are, the city is not getting slower in any of its needs or departments or workloads. It's only getting busier. Couple that, we're trying to find positions. I know Chief Anderson is still looking for officers all the time because they're just not out there to be had. The same thing goes on with the fire service. The same thing goes with public works. They just can't get the employees that need. So to think about cutting employees at this point, I think, is foolish. And I'd rather not see that happen, but thank you very much.
Thank you. It was nice to see you, and thank you for sharing.
Nice to see you.
Any other online or anything? Okay, under consent agenda, there is none under old business.
Leaving that hearing open to the next meeting?
Oh, I gotta close that hearing. I will be trained eventually.
Oh, yeah, we did talk about that. Madam Mayor, we did talk about leaving the budget public hearing open and having it open until the next meeting, which is the first meeting in April. What date is that, let me see? April fourth. Because everybody kind of has seen everything now. There's plenty of opportunity to look at it and come back with comments. We'll have one more meeting where we'll be discussing it. So just a final, hey Kate, we've shown you everything. Do you have any further comments before we place a vote? So we were gonna leave-
So we can just leave it open?
We can leave this public hearing open, and we will, obviously, they can come to the next budget committee as well, which is next Thursday, I mean, next Tuesday at four o'clock. But we will have another ability for the public- Yeah, that's a workshop. They'll have another ability to comment on the budget for the April third meeting before we take a final vote on what is going to, it's the final vote that day for what's going to the school budget validation referendum.
Fantastic. All right.
I will leave it open.
Do you have a little friend with you today?
I do. My son's here with me.
That's so nice. Gets to see his dad at work. Ian, thank you for bringing him.
I bet it's punishment.
You can ask him. He likes coming.
Now, Ian, do I have to read the thing first? You're not reading it.
These are just confirmation hearings. So you held the hearing last time. It's an opportunity to check, make sure that everything's correct. I wanted to report out on these about what further communication I've had with the owners as well.
Okay, so I will read it first. Twenty-three, one-twenty, zero-one. Confirm the findings and order a judging one Bowden Court to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Section twenty-eight fifty-one dash twenty-eight fifty-nine at the hearing held on March seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings and order for the city council and have the city clerk record it at the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. So let me have a motion first. Council Hanselman, deputy-
I'll make a motion to affirm the findings.
Okay, and I need a second. Council Hanselman?
I'll second that.
And now a discussion?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I did send the draft findings and order to the owner, Craig Holman, by email, and I didn't receive any response. So I forwarded him a number of things, and I asked if there's any objections that he has or any edits that are needed, and I didn't receive any answer.
Right.
That's what I have to say.
Now, does this person have the opportunity to come forward and do a thirty-day plan or something like that?
Yes, so after, as that, what you just read said, we'll have that served upon him. And at that point, he's got thirty days to present a plan. And I told them that also in the email and said, we're gonna want to see a rehabilitation plan for how you bring this property back into use.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we have, we need to vote on this, right? So all those approve this? Twenty-three, one-twenty-one dash zero-one. Confirm the findings and order a judging one Western Avenue to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Section twenty-eight fifty-one, twenty-eight fifty-nine at the hearing held on March seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings and order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds as advertised or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for that, for one Western Avenue to confirm the findings and file the findings in order at the registry of deeds.
And a second? Council Hanselman?
I'll second that.
All the, well, let's have a discussion first.
Similarly, I shared this with the foreclosing agent, asking if they had any comments or changes. And nothing was responded to. I've spoken with them in the past. I do know that this went to auction sale today.
Oh, good.
So I did speak with someone on the phone, explain to them what a rehabilitation plan entailed. And they understood.
Not complicated.
No. But it's nice to see that through this dangerous building process, it really precipitated the sale. I think off the top of my head, it was, it's been ten years that this has been sitting vacant and abandoned.
Wow. This is a good process then to follow through, so thank you.
It's cumbersome, time-consuming.
This was the property that was, looked in good shape, right? The ranch?
It was a ranch. It's a ranch on Western. It's got a reinforced foundation, so modern foundation. It's a ranch. I said, you know, what we do ask for is egress windows in the bedrooms. He said, well, does it have egress windows in the bedrooms? And I said, I don't know, but that's what we, you know, that's the extent of what we're asking for is just some reinvestment and make sure that whoever buys in the future is safe.
All right, well, thank you. Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor? Percent again? Twenty-three, one-twenty-two, zero-one. Confirm the findings and order a judging three fifty-seven, Sam Allen Road, to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one, twenty-eight fifty-nine at the hearing held on March seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the city manager to sign the findings and order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion, please?
Oh, go ahead. You can do this one.
I definitely motion.
And do I have a second? Excellent. Did you see who that was? Okay, and discussion?
I want to let you know that the code enforcement officer, sorry, that Jamie Cole, code enforcement officer, received a call from a third party with Mr. Sanderson present, challenging the order. So we do know that he's aware of it. We do know that he's aware of the hearing. And he's welcome to call. My telephone number is on the notice of hearing. And he can call to discuss a rehabilitation plan or whatever else needs to happen with this property. I think it really is a demolition in this case. I don't really see much left in that building, unfortunately.
Again, this is the same one. This is where Brook Street, the concrete block building, was demolished and same owner. So this is the same-
Yep, that's correct.
Jonathan?
Do you have any history on that building? It looks like it's been vacant for probably a decade maybe, but for at least quite a while.
It has been. I mean, if you remember from the pictures, you can see right through the chimney. There's sections of the walls that you can see into the inside. There aren't many windows that aren't broken. There's piles of trash in the front. I don't remember what the license date was on the car that's abandoned in the front yard. And then additionally, the other property in town was demolished a number of years ago.
Believe it or not, the concrete block was probably salvageable. But this one doesn't, I know someone who went into it and said it was structurally sound, et cetera. But this one is definitely not salvageable, from what I can tell.
Yeah, it's pretty light frame construction. I mean, you know, you're typically gonna have a building with siding, but this one kind of has like panelized construction. It's unheated. And I just don't, I don't know what's left of it.
Out of town owner?
The dug well is kind of caving in right by the road. So that has to have something put on it so we don't lose dogs or cats in the neighborhood. That's definitely not salvageable, three fifty-seven. It's just not.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate the information about the well. Thank you.
Yeah, that is good information.
All right.
Get heard.
And Ian, you might as well stand right there. I think you're up next. Twenty-three, one-oh-eight, zero-one. Order to accept the bid for the demolition of the International Wool Mill Boiler House Exhaust Stack from Dick Landry Lawn Care. Sounds weird to have a lawn care person doing this, doesn't it? In the firm fixed price amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. So do I have a motion?
Go moved.
And a second? And a discussion?
Thank you. So I did review this with the land bank last Wednesday. We got back bids on Tuesday. We had two bidders. The other bid was upwards of five-hundred thousand dollars. Just to make sure it's understood that, so that what's backing this is a bond of one million dollars for this project. That bond is also going to be matching an EPA application for funding. I think it'll be around two and a half million dollars that we're going to be going after. And we've been informed that this work that we're doing now will count towards that match. And the things that we're doing now in kind related to this also count towards that match. So TRC, our consultant, is putting together a cost estimate for that EPA application in November. There's some immediacy to the need to do this from a dangerous standpoint. I could show you the pictures of cracks. I've got up on my screen, if Ben, you'd be willing to share the pictures of this. This, and, but additionally, this is a historic district, and this is a historic structure. So if we were to get EPA funds, we couldn't likely do this work at the time that we got funds. And then also say, we have the funds available to cash flow this project in the meantime. So like I said, the bond is going to back this. We haven't bonded this yet, or authorized for the bond. But we have funds in the land bank in surplus to be able to carry out this activity at this time. As far as Dick Landry Lawn Care, the person, he's local. It's Matt Landry. He's worked for me directly in the past through the EPA, excuse me, the CDBG Community Development Block Grant. He's the contractor who did the Midtown Mall. He's a mason. He's actually the exact kind of person we need to do this work because they understand brick. You can build brick and you can also take brick apart. So his plan is to have two cranes on this property and also a lift. He's gonna operate on two sides of this stack. It's a hundred and thirty-two feet tall. I've, at this point, I've got an image up on the screen. I've spoken with the Sanford Mill owners yesterday. We've worked out a plan. I just wanted to just delineate that for you a little bit. We've got mill residents and customers and employees parking over here in the lower lot. These lot locations are already designated. I also talked with the two commercial tenants and also the owner handling the residential tenants. As far as residential tenants, I was informed there are three owners, excuse me, three tenants who need handicap access, so wheelchair access. We're gonna designate this area at the Gateway Park handicap only for the duration of the project. And then additionally, Great Bay is a, they have day services for, I think, mentally disabled individuals, very out in the community. I know that they're doing some trail cleanups for Earth Day. But they're rather excited to be using this area as a drop-off location. So they're gonna switch their operations from the parking lot in the rear to enter the building on Washington Street. And then I also noted on here this handicap access. So this is the way the residents will be able to access the building. A couple areas we're gonna set up, one crane's gonna be set up in this crane area. It's gonna be closed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And then they'll, the tenants will be able to use the lot at night. But the parking area is gonna be closed from seven AM to five PM. There are times when, if we need be, we can get a transportation vehicle in there. So rule of thumb is that when the cranes are down, you know, when there's no one up in a bucket working, we can allow limited transportation access for pickup and drop-off only, no parking. Mr. Landry expects that the project's gonna take three weeks. So you can pretty much look at that stack and divide it in thirds. I'm thinking four weeks, and we'll work on that together. He's got his method of how he's gonna do that. But we've also talked about that when he gets to that, after that second week, if we're about two-thirds down, he'll be able to open up some of the parking lot for parking during that time period. But I think still falling debris is gonna present an issue on the access road next to the facility. We're also gonna close down Pioneer on sections of that. It's going to be in the vicinity of that stack, but we don't foresee that there's gonna be any problem with that. I've been working with Matt Hill and Pete Smith on that as well. I appreciate they came out and helped me with meeting with the property owner, Sanford Mill. Additionally, that after we complete this project, we will be billing the owner for the work. So I have had communications with Mario Frate, the owner of Regco, and his attorney. He claims that he has insurance. And he, once we submit a bill, he said he will be submitting to his insurer to reimburse us.
Could you tell me the dates again that that will be closed?
I don't think I did yet. Sorry, I'm a little, I'm all over the place with my explanation of this. But it's, so Matt, Matt Landry's gonna start bringing in equipment next Wednesday. And construction's gonna start April third, so the following Monday. And expect three weeks.
Three weeks.
Just a quick question. As you're looking at the whole logistics of this, parking and traffic flow and stuff like that, it would, I think it would be nice for the diner if, since you're not gonna be able to actually go up the hill past this site. You're basically gonna block Pioneer after a certain point. Be kind of nice if there was a way to have people be able to park their, like, it's gonna, you know, park as if they're going to the diner, park on the left, and then have maybe ability to turn around and head. I don't know. I don't know if there's any way for the diner to have some parking still on the street because that's gonna be important too, especially if you're gonna be having tenants from across the street taking parking in the parking lots, et cetera, et cetera. Or maybe have the tenants park there so it frees up parking for the diner. So as you're thinking about it, that lower section could almost provide some parking for uses as you're doing this work.
Yeah, so-
Thought, I don't know if there's any ability to do something.
Possibly. I haven't had a conversation with them. But I also see ample parking in the lower- the lower lot, so I.
Yeah, but you're moving all the tenants over there now.
Right. I mean, well, but also, even if they were to take up all those center spaces all the time, there's a lot of parking around the perimeter. I was noticing, and I will speak with the diner, but along the north side of Pioneer, I see that they're parking there. So, I'll talk with, more with Matt and Pete about how to.
Since traffic, yeah, but then, as I says, since traffic's not going to be able to come down the hill, that's where they typically come from that direction and park down. But could you do angled parking for a short period of time, where they can kind of park up the hill, because it's really going to be, no traffic, it's just almost going to be like a parking lot during the day when Matt's there taking down the stack?
Yep.
Anyway, just a thought. Maybe some of the gentlemen in the audience looking at their phones could help you out there.
I'll make sure to touch base with them tomorrow.
So, we've already, we had the motion, the second. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much. And, young man, that's your son, right? Yeah, he has, I didn't hear his name.
My son?
Yeah, what was his name?
Bernard.
Bernard. You have a very important father, and I'm glad you got to come here to see him. We're very impressed with him and glad he's here. So, thank you for showing up. All right.
Thank you.
So, I have artwork from Bernard, and I have an unpublished book that I'm sitting on my shelf. So, when he does become a published author, I'm in on the ground level. Thank you.
Oh, nice.
Signed edition?
Yes.
Excellent, signed edition.
Okay, next. Twenty-three, one fourteen, zero one, order to review and approve an emergency ordinance regarding management of public parking in the school street parking lot and provisions of alternative off-street parking during snow emergencies. And hopefully, we aren't going to have any more, but I think we are.
Saturday and Sunday?
All right. Could I have a motion, please? So moved, Council Trench Montaigne, and a second. Thank you very much. And who is leading the discussion on this one? Is that you, Steve?
I will.
Thank you.
So, pursuant to the city charter, it's necessary to establish an emergency, that the declaration is read and that the council so recognized. So, this was brought up at the last city council meeting. There's an impact to the business district there. It was discussed at that point in time that the most expedient way to address this was an emergency act of ordinance. That's what has been written up here for this evening. So, the declaration states, whereas businesses have made notice of impacts of parking impediments in the school street parking lot due to the inability to perform snow removal, due to long-term parking and abandonment of vehicles in the city-owned parking lot off School Street, and whereas Public Works has confirmed the inability to timely clear the parking lot due to the number of long-term parked vehicles during the post-storms, creating a hazardous and unsafe area, and whereas the reduced availability for business parking during the duration of operational hours is detrimentally impacting the provisions of service to patrons and the viability and long-term welfare and operational needs within the business district, and whereas the need to address the parking impacts is necessary without delay to preserve business, businesses served by the parking lot, and whereas the school street parking lot cannot be enforceably cleared for winter maintenance without amendment to the timed parking restrictions or the lack thereof, and whereas an amendment by ordinance to Chapter 245-135 Schedule 13, parking prohibited during certain hours is necessary to prevent overnight and long-term parking within the school street parking lot to allow for winter maintenance, and whereas alternatives to the school street parking lot is necessary to accommodate off-street parking during winter snow removal bans. Now, therefore, the city council hereby proclaims a statement of emergency pursuant to City Charter 214.1, and hereby sets forth the emergency ordinance amending Chapter 245 vehicles and traffic, Articles 20, Schedule Section 135, Schedule 13, parking prohibited during certain hours to include no overnight parking to the school street parking lot. So, before I get into the meat of the ordinance itself, I would note that the Public Safety Committee produced exceptionally strong input into this, that the prior draft that was discussed at that point in time only addressed the school street parking lot, and it prohibited overnight parking to address the situation that's there currently. The secondary compensation to that led to the further amendment creating Section 245-136 Schedule 14 off-street parking during winter snow ban hours to create two new areas. So, it creates a new schedule under 245 as 136 Schedule 14, whereby the Heritage Drive Parking Lot off Heritage Drive and the Benton Park Parking Lot off in Robert Street will be allowed during those time periods of winter snow removal parking bans. Individuals can come off the street, park in those lots. Post-parking ban being lifted, within two hours thereafter, they're expected to remove their vehicles, and then crews can come through during normal operating hours, clean those lots in preparation for the next event and ongoing parking. The difficulty that we're trying to address on the school street lot for the reasons that I stated in the emergency were further verified. So, I have a report from Assistant Public Works Director Peter Smith. First, I want to call out my thanks to the Department of Public Works for the last storm event that this is referencing, and that they worked 25 nonstop hours of dealing with that storm. They handled 21 road closures because of the wind impacts, down trees and power lines. They responded to nine single-lane closures, deployed 42 barricades, provided three public assists for slide-offs, assisted seven, had seven assists for other agencies to include Central Main Power, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, called in 35 parking violations which continue, and then they went home to clear their own driveways thereafter. The observation for this particular parking lot is illustrative of the ongoing situation that's there. During that event, it was noted that there were 34 main registered vehicles, one of them with a trailer parked in the lot, five out-of-state vehicles, one state-of-main car, one transient, six unregistered vehicles, for a total of 48 slots. So, when I look at the configuration in there, the school street parking lot, this is the diagram for that, there are 99 currently available spaces during the summer months in that diagram, 48 of which were occupied during the snow event. They're there long-term, so there's no question as to why Public Works cannot timely clear that lot when 49% of the spaces are occupied, short and long-term. You can't clear the lot, right? So, that was the discussion as to where some of those people might go during snow ban removal periods of time, thus the discussion of including the Benton Park Parking Lot, which is Parks and Recreation. Current ordinance, because that is a parks facility, precludes overnight parking there. By making this amendment, you'll open that up for overnight parking or anytime there's a snow ban. So, Parks Department has not been clearing that extensively, because it's not been used in that way, shape before, but they would clear it under this new scenario. People could park there during the snow clearing events, remove their vehicles within two hours thereafter, and then the crews can clear the yard in preparation for the next. Same thing for the Heritage Drive Parking Lot, which is significantly underutilized. It's a great asset to the community. They could use it in the same nature. Neither of those two parking lots would have detrimental impacts for business operations. So, if the city council approves this emergency ordinance this evening, it would go into effect for 90 days. If you make no further amendments, or you do not lift it prior to, it would stay in effect for those 90 days. That obviously gets us beyond the snow clearing interval period of time. And then if you so direct, I will bring this forward for a permanent enactment such that before it lapses in 90 days, you would have the permanent ordinance. In order to do that, it would require a public hearing on the ordinance change as well as first and second read. If you approve this ordinance tonight, it will preclude overnight parking indefinitely, well, for this 90-day period in the school street parking lot, not just during snow events, but for at all times. It would also create two new designated areas, and the reason that I drafted this as a new Schedule 136, when a new Schedule 14, is to allow the city to look at the utilization of these two newly created areas, and it provides you a mechanism to look forward for other amendments as might be needed in the future, without having to recreate that again, but the ordinance would be set up to allow you to do that. So, that are the two substantive elements. If you do approve this tonight, it's a single read, and it becomes active as of the time of passage this evening. Thank you.
Councilor Hurley?
Just a quick question, because I'm assuming you discussed it. Do we have any idea, I mean, not that I really care, because this is kind of a little bit of abuse here, but where these cars are coming from, what's the anticipated location that they're, nope, so it's just, okay. I'm okay with this.
I've heard some of the vehicles were transient, south, but did we get on into these cars? And some people were asleep. Backstreet restaurant owner, Paul, he had said that one night. They'd be packing up. I get them back, and the kind of transient. Although she worked all night, and all her friends that came just here, because people playing it all night. You don't feel safe. So, our inaction will hurt this restaurant. Our law will run off of the transient, and it's not safe for winter, or at nighttime anymore. Our law's just not safe. This would alleviate all of this, as a city manager felt, alternate parking for when there's snow. That was the biggest thing that I thought about, was how can we do this? Because in my opinion, safer than outside.
Yeah, I think this was a good answer to the problem. Any other comments? Councilor Martel?
I just had a quick question. I noticed the Benton Park Parking Lot still has quite a bit of snow, and we have some snow coming Saturday, I believe. Would we be able to get that cleaned off?
We'll work to clear that lot in the meantime, yes.
Okay.
I think they're waiting for us to vote on this before they do anything.
That's fair.
All right. Councilor Stackpole?
Additionally, I'm just not familiar with the lighting down there. How's the lighting in the parking lot?
It's pretty good.
So, that, lighting doesn't present any safety issues or anything?
As long as it's on. I mean, once it goes off, it's a little dark.
Just going to seek strong enforcement that within two hours after the event is lifted, that the vehicles are removed, that they don't just remain there.
I agree.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. And let's look at twenty-two, four thirty-seven, zero one, order to discuss the creation of a new city committee, the Arts Commission of Sanford. And Dave Parent, I assume you're going to talk on this?
I am, but mostly because Carrie Clock could not make it tonight. She has several wonderful, energetic, creative children that would not have.
She's online to support you, though.
She is online, yes. And she probably wisely chose not to bring them along with her. I, unlike her, am old, and all my kids are grown up, so I don't have to worry about those things. So, the Arts Commission of Sanford that we're proposing started out as a memorandum of agreement, and we went to several committee meetings, city council committee meetings. City staff has been great working with us, trying to make this work. In the end, it just wasn't going to work to have a separate organization do the sort of things that we'd really like to do. So, the suggestion was made, well, why don't we have an arts commission, an arts committee that's part of the city? That resolves all the issues that we had.
I didn't do that.
And it also gives the city an arts commission, which is a wonderful thing. I think it's a great step forward for the city. It gives you somebody to comment on grant applications, things like that. So, I think it's a great idea. When I reworded it for an arts commission, I left in a lot of the whereas clauses, just because it gave the purpose and the benefits of this commission. You can leave those in or not, it's up to you. The only comment I got from city staff was to change from 12 members to an odd number, either 13 or 15, for the purpose of votes. I'm fine with either, whatever you want to do with that on a number. As you know, you get too big, and sometimes a committee doesn't work out very well, and that number is somewhere is around 12 to 15. So, we're happy with wherever you set the number.
And go down to 11. I was like, maybe go down to 11?
We could go down to 11. I think that would be fine, too. I wouldn't want to turn people away who are interested, and I think there is interest in this, and I think it'd be a very good thing. And there's people in the arts coalition who have committed to step up and serve on this new committee.
Excellent.
I think we've had a discussion. We're going to put it out there. Obviously, you guys have to get the seats filled, and things have to run. So, I mean, the whole point of this is so that you can more easily use city assets to hold events. That means this committee has to be filled, and it has to function the way it's supposed to. You can't just say, we're going to keep this other group too, and we're going to have the committee as well. To get the protection of the city on the insurance piece, this committee is where it comes from. So, just everybody understands that.
Yes.
Because I'm hearing things on the side, and a little concerned. This is the committee that's going to matter for the insurance piece.
Yeah. They, so they want to keep the coalition going, because there's much more that the coalition is about. And I think that this commission will attract people who weren't interested in doing the collaborative. So, I think it's, I think it's a great step forward. And the other thing is that when the events that Carrie has already, Carrie is, Carrie has a lot of energy. Carrie is awesome. She's the one who puts up all the art in the windows in businesses on Main Street. She's just doing amazing things. So, she's kind of already planned these. But the other nice thing about this being part of the city is when these events happen, they are City of Sanford events. They're not Arts Collaborative putting on something for the city. This is a City of Sanford event, and I think that's important for the arts in Sanford, and it'll hopefully help revitalize things in Sanford.
Excellent.
And lead to great things. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Does anyone have any questions? Jonathan?
I'm just curious what kind of things you had in mind to put on for events. I was just looking through the packet a little bit, and it looked like there was something planned.
Yeah, so for the first year, there's a map on there that shows where we plan to do art walks, which many other communities around us do. We will pick a Friday that doesn't conflict with Portland, Portsmouth, or any nearby communities. And it might be the first Friday, it might be the second Friday, the third Friday, all summer long. And those are on sidewalks in Sanford, downtown Sanford. Carrie has touched base with business owners who just love this idea, because it's going to bring people into downtown Sanford. One of them, she said, actually broke down, started crying, because she just thought it was wonderful that something like this was going to happen in Sanford. We also hope to do Art in the Park events, where we'd invite artists in to display their art and sell their artwork. If we look a little further down the road, we think there's other events we could do, possibly Shakespeare in the Park, maybe other things. But that takes a little more planning, so that would probably be year two. But year one's going to be just the art walks, Art in the Park, get Sanford on the map with what everybody, we have wonderful artists in Sanford. We have many wonderful artists, and they're leaving the community doing artworks, art walks in other communities. We had the art show at the theater, and I, some of you went. It was packed, and they sold art, and it was wonderful, and it was just, it was great. We had people playing original music. One guy was on the piano, then we had Ashlyn Bard, who was on the guitar, singing original songs. It was just wonderful. It was really neat. So, we want to have more of that happening in Sanford. These are people from Sanford doing this, and it's just wonderful.
Excellent. Well, could I have a motion to accept, please? Councilor Stackpole?
Yep, motion to accept the proposal, yep.
Can I have a second? Counselor, sorry, go ahead.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
And all those in favor? Thank you.
So, I'm assuming, Larissa, this is going to go up, and you're going to start accepting applications?
Yep. We'll have to, we're out of that. Can we put in a request for the first project to be getting art in council chambers?
Yes.
It looks like a prison, so yes.
I'm actually working with Jordan right now to do a contest of Sanford art, so whether it's photography or paintings, we're going to try to get artwork from around, like, people's favorite spots in Sanford. people's favorite spots in Sanford, to hopefully hang on the walls, so.
What a great idea.
That should be good.
That's fantastic. All right, thank you, and, and Dave, thanks for not giving up.
Oh, thank you.
Keep pushing. Excellent.
It's a process.
All right. Okay, moving on. Do we have any counselor comments? Bob? You go.
All right, I got a few of them, so, so the weather's getting nicer, and my wife and I have been getting out, and my family have been getting out and about a little more. We did attend at the Sanford Performing Arts Center, the, it was called a Step Crew, they had all the different, yeah, you were at that, yeah. And, very, very entertaining, and once again, I'm just gonna say, very reasonably priced for the entertainment that you get, so-
Shrek this weekend.
What's that?
Yeah, Shrek this weekend.
Shrek is this weekend.
The Shrek the musical, the kids are doing this weekend.
Okay.
It's probably practically sold out, so get your tickets now. Parents, you know.
Okay, so I think, I think you heard all that. So, so that's, so that's-
You're reminded.
Yeah, and I think, I'm thinking of two things, I thought I had a third thing. And last weekend, just as, as a comparison, my daughter lives in Wyndham, North Wyndham now, so we went to Wyndham High School to, you know, St. Patrick's Day, all these things have a Celtic theme, to see the Celtic Tenors, I believe they were called, in the Wyndham High School Performing Arts Center, which was excellent, very well done, the students were part of the performance, they did, they did a great job. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is to say, unfortunately, to the people of Wyndham, that the Sanford Performing Arts Center is really head and shoulders above what they've got up there. And I've been hearing about how great Wyndham High School is for years and years, and so it was part of my curiosity to go see what some of these other performing arts centers look like. And really, we have a extraordinary venue right here in Sanford, so take advantage of it, get out and, and see these things if they, you don't have to go to everything, but if you see these things that are interesting and interest you, and you like to be entertained, you don't necessarily have to like jazz, or like piano, or like plays, if you just like to be entertained, just pony up the money and, and go. As I said, it's very reasonably priced.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
So even though there's snow coming this weekend, you should go out and see Shrek. I can't even believe there's snow coming this weekend, someone told me during the meeting. I thought it was cruel. Anyway, I'm going to a meeting on the car show Thursday night, because I think they're trying to expand options for food, and that includes the parking lot where my apartment building is. So that just, I wanna get everybody excited that even though we're having snow on Saturday, summer is on its way, and eventually we will have a car show again on Main Street. The other conversation I had this weekend, I met with Kristen Seer, who's one of the ones working on potentially having a bike pump track in Sanford. Steve came back, but I'll still say it. We met at the Sanford Snow Dump, and I had a conversation with her about the complexity of relocating the snow dump, but we did talk about how large the snow dump is, and whether they could carve out a section of it that stayed out of the way. So I think you might, we might see a proposal for that as an option, as well, as well as other sites they're looking at. We talked about the different sites, and why I thought they'd work, why they wouldn't, I also said, you know, there are, there is the ability to do an analysis of walkability or bikeability for the kids, Kylie did that for us for the high school, it's possible she, you know, we could do something where Kylie might be able to give us a quick glimpse of how the, how each site would rate as far as walkability or bikeability for the kids. Because one of the sites that was mentioned when we had this conversation was Holdsworth Park. That's just too far out of the way to really be enjoyed, it should be really as close to the population base as possible. So we did talk about that, and as a follow-up to the fact that we've had that conversation, I think she's trying to come potentially to our August 11th meeting, but she's working on the logistics to make sure what she provides. Well, I think because I had told her that you were gonna prevent the other one, and potentially do April, with April, yeah. So I'll, I'll make sure she follows up to make sure she's ready, because she does not wanna come unless she's ready either, so. Okay? There you go.
All right. Counselor Trench-Montane? Got yours?
I put my mic on.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm learning. Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to go see the Warhawks football team, semi-pro, Sanford has one, they're gonna be at the Alumni Field for their home games. Their first game is in Connecticut, I think this coming weekend and following weekend. Zach Sherlin is their manager and head coach, and they've been really good, so hopefully they reached out and they wanna be part of community events, I thought of Ann, for Downtown, Friends of Downtown, so I'm gonna link you guys, because why not have a whole able-bodied football team to help you set up and take down things? That's, it would be very useful, so that was my thought there. And they were really nice, they went out of the way, I brought my grandson with me, they all taking pictures, coming over, and we actually have a Sanford boy, Noah Lura, that's on the team, and I think that's pretty amazing. So he just got back from the, from the Navy for five years, and he played overseas in Italy, just playing, and it's working out pretty good for one of our own, so. All the football players, JV and Varsity and freshmen, this is worth it, so keep playing. So that was my thought on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Hanselman?
Fight for it, guys. We can fight over it. A couple of quick things, one, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Jamie Cole for the work he's done in our planning department. I feel like he, along with the staff of, of our codes department, really stepped up from everything I've been told, and I hope he's excited to have the new planner on board and can get things maybe a little bit shifted back, but I just wanna thank him for his efforts, along with the whole codes and the planning staff we do have. And then, as a growth council member, as well as a member of Friends of Downtown, I'm really excited to attend Main Street America's Main Street Now Conference in Boston next week, on Monday and Tuesday. I will be leaving the event early to be back for the budget meeting Tuesday night, but I'm excited to check that out for a couple of days. And then, just a shout-out to my daughter, Alina, who scored her first collegiate-level lacrosse school this evening, and I wasn't there to see it, so I'm gonna give her a shout-out that I'm awfully excited she did, and I'll look for the video. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Martel?
Thank you. Just a shout-out to one of the first, looks like one of the first people to be using the gym for a show. There's a Sanford gun show on April 8th and 9th, so that's coming right up, 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, and Sunday, 9:00 to 2:00. So please come out, it's usually fun to look around, you never know what you'll, you'll find, it's usually random stuff, so if you can come out, that would be great.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to any future agenda items. Does anyone have any items? Are you all just so worn out, because we've been, we've been meeting at 3 o'clock and going until 10?
Budget, 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 budget.
All right, good.
We still have a meeting.
This meeting is adjourned, but we need to move into the office there, conference room, because we have an executive session.